Hi, I'm Kristi Oldham in Los Feliz. You're watching LA City View Channel 35, our city, our channel. Would you like a mustache with that?
In LA this week...
More than 100 kids who usually wouldn't have the opportunity to attend summer camp, enjoying three days of fun in the sun. I am Gil Reyes here at this edition of Camp Wesson. I'll tell you all about it next.
I'm Anna Marcos. Homeless Connect Day means lots of community services for homeless people in the Valley. More on this coming up.
Mother Nature comes into the classroom at the Armenta Street Early Education Center. Hello and welcome to LA this week. Thanks for joining us. I'm Yana Kay. It was a down-home swearing-in ceremony for Councilmember Curran Price. As Anna Marcos shows us, the party hosted free food, fun, and entertainment. But it was also about building community and looking to the future.
It wouldn't be a party without some gospel singing. In this case, the Second Baptist Church Choir. But in this community, a young mariachi girl band was also part of the swearing-in entertainment.
Because he connects people. Because he's a leader for all. Because he understands that when the Black community and the Latino community are pitted against each other, we lose. But when we get together and we fight and we have a vision, we win.
The best of my ability.
Councilmember Curran Price was sworn in by US Congresswoman Lucille Royball Allard as he leads the 9th District through a second term. In his first four years, Price fought for raising the minimum wage, cleaning up and making his community safer, creating jobs, and standing up for immigrants. But he says there's a lot more in store for the second term.
We're going to be close working on economic development issues, more jobs for local residents, more housing, cleaner streets, better resources.
Councilman Price cosponsored the $15 hotel living wage.
You'd be surprised that with a district, when he came in, they had the highest rate of unemployment in any other part of the city. We did not have a workforce center here.
He never does the easy things. Banning the block was hard. Raising the minimum wage was hard.
And then it was time to party, at least for a little while, before Councilmember Price resumes the hard work of running the district. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Turning now to homelessness in our community, and you may be shocked at the number of college students who are homeless. A new survey on community college campuses sheds light on a drastic situation. Gil Reyes has more from LA Trade Tech College. Gil?
Yana, you may recall a disheartening report released last year that found that 1 in 10 Cal State University students was homeless. This study even more alarming. It found 1 in 5 LA community college students is homeless. We talked to some of the students today about the solutions proposed.
I'm currently living with my friend. She let me stay with her until I get housing.
Mariah Smiley is a student at LA Trade Tech College. She's also homeless. Excuse her for not speaking clearly. She hasn't eaten today.
It's hard and, you know, these days you're going to want to stop, but just keep going.
Mariah is like thousands of others at the LA Community College District's nine campuses. A district-wide survey found 1 in 5 students is homeless, and that 2/3 of them can't afford to eat properly.
When they suffer, we all suffer because those barriers to learning affect the success of our overall economy and society.
LA County Supervisor Mark Ridley Thomas says the recently passed Measures H and HHH will provide relief in more housing and services. But that will take time. In the shorter term, LA community colleges have launched a first-ever voucher meal plan, providing free food for enrolled students in emergency situations only.
They can go to the counselor, they can go to an administrator, and they can say, "Hey, I haven't eaten today, I haven't eaten this week, I need help," and they will provide them with a voucher for free food that day.
Scott Svonkin, LA CCD Board President, says emergency students will be able to take advantage of two free days of food at most, enough time to hook them up with services.
Our job is not to provide food at our cafeterias free. Our job is to connect people that need services to them permanently.
There's also a plan in the works to build affordable student housing on community college campuses.
You know, I hope that they really do what they say they do, like they really put like action to what they're talking about.
At LA Trade Tech College, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Students in need can get help now by calling the LA Homeless Services Authority at 213-683-3333. And over in the Valley, community members are doing what they can to help those struggling with homelessness by offering much-needed services. Anna Marcos takes us to the latest Homeless Connect Day in Van Nuys. Anna?
Cookie, anyone? Yana, as you can see, there are about 150 to 200 people here today come to get services at Homeless Connect Day, including cookies. They line up early as Homeless Connect Day kicks off at the Hope of the Valley nonprofit in Van Nuys. The event, which brings city and county services together, has been so popular, it's now a monthly happening here.
They feed you, they clothe you, take showers. You can come here and get a peace of mind and get away from whatever's going on out there in the streets.
Just a large hub of resources for people to get the help they need.
I've been homeless for seven months. My ex-husband hit me, tried to kill me.
You look great.
I feel fantastic. I'm just very artsy. I've been artsy all my life. I think just because I'm homeless, it's important to keep myself nice.
I need to get off the streets. I've been out here four years now.
For the first time, LA family housing is heading this effort, which means more housing opportunities here. Even if you don't get housing right away, volunteers take your information so you're on a housing waitlist. Meanwhile, you can stop by and get medical services, or stock up on clothes and shoes, plenty to pick from. There's leashes, bowls, and all kinds of goodies for your pet. Or how about a nice haircut and style, courtesy of the Western Barber's Institute.
I want to help out the community, get back to everybody I can.
Some homeless residents are so gung-ho about this place, they also volunteer and help out, people like Keith Russell and his wife Melissa McQueen.
Why I'm volunteering is from my heart. This is what I do. I've been doing it over a year. It kept me with hope, you know what I'm saying? That's real. Like, coming here, over the Valley is it.
Oh, it's real for this dog, all right. Looks like he found the pet goodies. All in all, a little something to make everyone feel a little more at home, even when they don't have one. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Hope of the Valley is a nonprofit that helps people who are homeless. Besides all the city, county, and state agencies on hand, the event also got help from local neighborhood councils, which donated food and clothing. While tech titans of Silicon Beach are working on another issue in our community, the county's outdated foster care system. Gil Reyes has some new ideas from a recent hackathon.
Most foster kids have a tough enough time as it is growing up. Now add how difficult it can be reuniting with loved ones with all this crazy gridlock.
And in LA traffic, that can be a nightmare. And so I look at things like Uber and Lyft and some of the airline scheduling technology and think, "How can we use some of that to help move our kids around so they spend less time in cars?"
The Department of Children and Family Services gets creative at this Hack Foster Care Hackathon in Playa Vista. Officials from the foster care system collaborate with tech titans like Snapchat, Fullscreen, and Disney Interactive on ways to improve.
I think a lot of people in tech, especially there are so many new people who are working here in Silicon Beach, who didn't know in their own backyard that Los Angeles has the biggest foster care population. It's one of the largest child welfare systems in the nation. And so here today, we've invited hackers to learn about the issues of child welfare in Los Angeles, and then also help us come up with solutions using the tools that they know.
Another idea is a phone texting community, offering advice to foster youth making the tough transition into adulthood. And there are more concepts.
Whether that means we're thinking of an app that connects that homeless young person to a bed that night, or an application that helps a young person or family get licensed faster, it's about really figuring out, how can we serve the young people and families in our care better?
In full support is LA Mayor Eric Garcetti, who with his wife Amy Wakeland has fostered seven children. Maggie Lynn, a former foster child turned advocate, says much of the system could use an upgrade.
In this day and age, when you can find a place to live anywhere around the world in less than 24 hours on Airbnb, when you can find someone to marry on eHarmony, or someone to go on a date with in 10 minutes on Tinder, it's crazy that we can't, we don't have some of the solutions.
But techies are making waves in Silicon Beach. In Playa Vista, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Other foster care hackathons have taken place in Washington DC and in the Bay Area Silicon Valley. Well, just like Lady Liberty's torch symbolizes the light of hope in New York, Los Angeles now unveils a new symbol of its own, a stainless steel monument that will glisten during the day and light up at night. Rasha Goel has more.
Hundreds gathered at the inaugural LA Freedom Festival to witness the unveiling of this stainless steel monument known as the Freedom Sculpture. It's a gift to the city by the Iranian-American community. The sculpture is a replica of the Cyrus Cylinder from the Persian Empire of King Cyrus the Great.
He was the first ruler 2,500 years ago to recognize human rights, to conquer people, but to allow them to keep their own religion and to keep their own traditions.
And that's the inspirational message being promoted here. The Farang Foundation, who was pivotal in this effort, says the idea was to create a parallel between Iranian and American values while showcasing the need for diversity, respect, and religious freedom.
Freedom to me is allow people to be who they are without harming another person next to them.
The monument is located at one of the busiest intersections in West Los Angeles. With up to 100,000 cars passing per day, the Freedom Sculpture is modeled to give the illusion of movement from all directions. It symbolizes the transhistorical messages found on the Cyrus Cylinder and their applicability to the modern period.
Is the result of the donations and contributions of over 1 million people who raised over $2 million to make this dream happen in Los Angeles.
Officials say this Freedom Sculpture, called the Statue of Liberty of the West Coast, is the most widely crowdfunded monument ever gifted in United States history. I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
The Freedom Sculpture will be a permanent fixture at the intersection of Santa Monica Boulevard and Century Park East. It's a way of putting nature back into young children's learning. The LA Unified School District is adding so-called Nature Explore classrooms to some of its early education centers. Anna Marcos joins us from Van Nuys with more. Anna?
Yana, who says you can't learn the ABCs under a tree? As you can see, nature comes into the classroom at the Armenta Street Early Education Center. Using building blocks made of natural wood, watching plants grow, and learning to walk this nature obstacle course is all part of the learning curriculum. The kids are loving their new Nature Explore classroom. What's the favorite thing you like to do here?
We play at the park and we play with the water and paint.
It makes you go water, but can put water on my, on the plants.
This young nature lover is very concerned that I follow the rules. Why can't I be doing this with my hand here?
Because you get paint on your hand.
I do?
You have to wash it over there.
Oh, okay, so I got to follow the rules, right? All right. Parents love the Nature Explore classroom, too.
I want him to grow up to be a good citizen and, you know, take care of this earth and, you know, this planet.
The Nature Explore classroom is the fifth out of 11 to be built at early education centers in the school district with state bond education funds. But educators want to see these at all of LA USD's early education centers.
Every morning, the children gathers in the gathering area, and the teacher asks the children to close their eyes, pay attention to the surrounding, relax, listen, and the children start noticing the simplest sound as the birds chirping.
Lessons are often made out of what the children notice, whether it be the birds or the bees or something else. Parents notice the difference.
I see how well he is speaking. He asks things. He knows how to speak now more fluently.
All this natural bounty is something to clap and sing about, but of course...
I told you you should wash it over here. I told you.
Yeah, even in nature, you've got to follow the rules. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The Nature Explore classrooms cost about $1 million each. Well, remember summer camp? Well, if so, you're lucky, as many families can afford the luxury. But this camp is free, swimming, kayaking, and horseback riding included. Gil Reyes has more from Mid-City. Gil?
Yana, let the fun begin. Actually, the fun has already started with these kids already boarding buses, their parents waiting anxiously for their departure, as the kids will be spending three days and two nights in summer camp. Welcome to another spectacular year for Camp Wesson. Almost all of the kids have boarded. They're excited for this mini-vacation, and so are their parents.
I'm enjoying sleeping in tomorrow morning and having breakfast, just me and my husband at home together, without a lot of energy in the room.
And the Roth, from Council District Headquarters in Mid-City to Hanson Dam Recreation Center. Camp Wesson's summer camp was founded by City Council President Herb Wesson. It's mainly for kids whose families can't afford traditional camp.
The majority of these kids come from the district that I'm fortunate to represent, but I turn away no kids. You know, we have a limit of about 120 kids. We stay at that, and I don't care where you live. It's a free camp. You know, so parents that have had their children with them every day of the life of that child, this gives them three days to just kind of breathe and relax.
The kids also get that same respite from their parents. We don't, we don't seem to think that the kids need a break also, but they need a break from rules and regulations. They're here, but it's in a different format.
How do you feel right now? Are you excited? Are you scared or what?
I'm excited and scared at the same moment.
Kids also learn to conquer their fears, as this marks the first time many of them are away from their parents.
Beautiful. All right. Keep going. Here we go.
Over at the rock-climbing wall, Romy Higgins struggles midway, but with encouragement, reaches the top.
I was really scared, but I pulled through. I thought about my mom a little bit, so that pulled me through, too. So, yeah.
What do you mean, you thought of your mom? You thought, like, tell me about that.
Like, keep pushing, never give up.
And it's such, it's like life. You might have an obstacle in life that you're going to see that it's really impossible, but with a little help, someone coaching you, or someone telling you, or like with the young man who said that his mom said, "Never give up," you can do it.
Camp counselors hope the lessons will last a lifetime. The camp now in its 11th year.
And it has evolved into this, so we're darn proud of it.
Happy trails, and we'll see you all again next summer. Reporting from Camp Wesson, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The group Community Build helped select the kids. Community Build also pitched in to supply three days of free food, clothes, and activities. And another city department is also supporting Community Kids this summer by helping develop the building blocks for success. Rasha Goel has more on the LA City Department of Rec and Parks' Summer Leadership Program.
13-year-old Janet Kawano has been coming to the Echo Park Recreation Center since she was five years old. She used to come as a student for their summer camp, but now she is there to give back to other students as a camp leader.
I get to work with all types of people and understand what it's like to have a job, even though I'm 13. I wanted to become a camp leader because it would help me in school and I'd learn leadership.
Janet is among nine other teens who are part of the Camp Leadership Program offered through Echo Park's Department of Recreation and Parks that helps prepare teens for the real world.
The CLP program brings the teens into our community, teaching them service and leadership together.
They learn leadership, team-building, and management. They also put on special events such as this one, where they plan everything from start to finish. But it's helping take care of the campers that gives them a strong sense of responsibility.
I learned leadership, how to like play with the kids, and teach them about sports and other activities.
The Camp Leadership Program runs for nine weeks in the summer, winter, and spring. Participants attend five days a week for pretty much a full day from 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The kids first go through a training program prior to camp and then participate as leaders.
I was nervous because I didn't think I was going to do that great, but as time passed by, it got pretty easy.
And by the time they are done, they are ready to conquer the world. In Echo Park, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
For more information on other Department of Rec and Parks programs, visit laparks.org. While students who walk or bike to school in Hollywood will soon be a lot safer on the street, officials take steps to fight street racing in Chatsworth, and a new housing complex in Mid-City offers affordable units to seniors. All these stories in City B. Councilmember Mitchell Farrell and community members broke ground on several new pedestrian safety improvements at Hollywood High and Selma Avenue Elementary Schools in Hollywood. City officials announced the plan as part of the Safe Routes to School Program, which helps improve traffic safety for students who walk and bike to and from school. Improvements will include new traffic signals, speed humps, curb extensions, new streetlights, and sidewalks. One of the main goals is to reduce speeds on Selma Avenue and increase the visibility of people walking.
It's going to be not only safer, but much more beautiful, and we're going to encourage people to walk and give them a level of safety here that they've never had before.
Councilmember Mitchell England Durand and representatives from LAPD and LADOT unveiled the installation of rumble strips on Plummer Street in Chatsworth as part of a new pilot project to combat illegal street racing. Plummer Street between Canoga Avenue and Topanga Boulevard, a frequent site for street racing, has been referred to as the Canoga Speedway and was the site where two spectators were killed in 2015. LA City Councilmember Paul Coretts helped celebrate the reopening of Beverly Park Senior Apartments, formerly known as Beth Am Manor. The three-story complex located at 1071 Los Yenenga in Mid-City features 49 low-income one-bedroom units for seniors and people with disabilities. Coretts talked about the importance of affordable housing for seniors in his district.
We have a huge shortage of housing and affordable housing, and seniors don't necessarily have another place to go, so this is a great opportunity.
If you're looking for a fun evening this summer, then head on over to North Hollywood for No Ho Summer Nights, a free concert and movie series that's perfect for the whole family. Gil Reyes takes us there.
Beatlemania has arrived in North Hollywood, so have Maria Aguilar and her family.
We like being out, and we like enjoying people, and we love music, and this is a great time to come out and just enjoy.
Beatles cover band Ticket to Ride among the acts performing at this year's No Ho Summer Night Series. The events at North Hollywood Park are hosted by Councilmember Paul Krikorian.
Tonight, we're here for the second of a series of five concerts. Every Saturday night, we're having free concerts, free to the public. Anybody can come on down, spread their blanket out, enjoy a picnic, and listen to some terrific live music. And then following the concert series, we're going to be having a series of five free movie screenings here as well.
Ticket to Ride is billed as America's number-one Beatles tribute band. The Department of Cultural Affairs and the Valley Cultural Center helped bring them and other acts here.
I pay attention to all the venues here in the park. I love the way that they have outdoor entertainment.
It's going to be a great summer of activity every Saturday evening in this park.
We'll see you there. In North Hollywood, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
For a complete schedule of concerts and movies, visit valleycultural.org. Well, experience the culture and food of Ecuador during the Food Festival and Parade, enjoy a glimpse into the past of downtown's historic theaters, and get on board with a free movie night in North Hollywood. All this and this week's Things to Do. Come out and celebrate the 19th Annual Taste of Ecuador Food Festival and Parade. More than 10,000 Ecuadorians and 5,000 other folks from different nationalities will enjoy a full menu of Ecuadorian cuisine and some other well-known food dishes. Folks will also enjoy Ecuadorian crafts, Ecuadorian musical groups, folklore, customs, commercial products, free gifts, carnival games, and more. The parade will also feature car clubs, dance groups, drill teams, convertibles, and motorcycles. So don't miss it on August 6th from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. at El Pueblo. Take a walking tour of downtown LA's historic theater district and learn all about Broadway's evolution and ongoing revitalization. Broadway thrived for decades as the entertainment epicenter of Los Angeles. Still a vibrant shopping street, the area is now a hub of adoptive reuse projects that have turned office buildings and department stores into housing, dining, retail, and nightlife destinations. The tour takes place Saturday, August 5th from 10 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. For more, visit laconservancy.org. Relive one of the most memorable love stories of all time, as 11-time Oscar winner Titanic hits the big screen during No Ho Summer Nights. Follow Rose and Jack's journey as they fall in love on the ill-fated ship. Gather the family, some blankets, chairs, and snacks, and head on over to Movie Night on Saturday, August 5th at the North Hollywood Park, located at 11430 Chandler Boulevard. For more, visit valleycultural.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kayne from All of Us here at LA this week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook.
MyLA311 is an easy-to-use mobile phone app, available from the App Store or on Google MyLA311 links Angelenos with the services and information they need to enjoy their city, beautify their community, and stay connected with their local government, find the nearest fire station, library...
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Sadio moves. Mr. Coretts seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rue moves, and Ms. Rodriguez seconds. Next.
Mr. President, there are request to continue items. That would be 1B and H to September 1, and item 13 for one week to August 9.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered. Continue.
The Department of Building and Safety recommends that the following items be received and filed. 1C is the lien has been paid in full, and 1E, as the lien has been partially paid and partially rescinded.
Okay, so without objection, without objection, so ordered. Continue.
Items 1 through 8 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Okay, let's hold those items and move forward.
Items 9 through 10 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Specials members, I don't see any, so let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Continue.
Items 11 through 18 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you, Mr. Price?
Mr. President, thank you. Could you hold item 14, please?
Item 14, let's hold that for Mr. Price. In fact, do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Okay, so that brings us where?
Items 19 through 22 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Yeah, let's hold those. That brings us where?
That takes council back to items called special or presentations.
Okay, let me defer to Mr. Price at this time. Mr. Price, did you want to begin, begin our day? If so, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, colleagues, I'd like to start off by thanking you for your time this morning. As we recognize BeautyCon Media, one of the largest growing beauty service and production products companies in the world. In fact, BeautyCon Media is gearing up for its annual festival right here at the Los Angeles Convention Center, August 12 and 13, where thousands are expected to converge for a weekend devoted to beauty, panel discussions, pop-up shops, and more. BeautyCon Festival Los Angeles is the largest festival in their series and boasts the highest attendance anywhere. It's particularly exciting to see a Los Angeles-born event with corporate headquarters right here in L.A. having such a great growth trajectory. Their mission resonates with all that Los Angeles stands for: inclusion, innovation, embracing diversity. They have challenged the traditional definition of beauty through innovative means to highlight inner beauty and to connect diverse base of communities through their social media networks and destination festivals. I'm impressed with their willingness to go beyond the business objective to support and become part of the community and to connect so well with our youth. It's my pleasure to recognize them this morning, members, so please join me in welcoming Moje Madera, the CEO, co-founder of BeautyCon Media, Jonathan Buford, co-founder and creative director of BeautyCon Media, and Kevin Gold, founding partner of BeautyCon Media.
Welcome. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. Thank you for your work, and thank you for being here.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. Thank you, Councilman Price. We're really honored and flattered, and as someone who's considered, Los Angeles has been my home for over 20 years. This is a huge honor. One of the greatest pleasures of doing our job every day is that we get to bring out 78-plus percent of our audiences ethnic and diverse, really celebrating themselves across media platforms, subscription businesses, and consumer brands. So we're really happy to be here and thank you for all of your support, and we're excited to grow really big and huge with you over the next few years. Now I'll let Jonathan and Kevin say a few words.
Welcome, John.
Hi, I'm Jonathan, Jonathan Buford, Creative Director of BeautyCon Media. We're so excited to be here. We've worked really hard over the past four years to bring together like-minded communities. You may have noticed the rise in digital communities of like-minded people coming together, diverse audiences, and we'd like to thank that BeautyCon, our festivals are really the in-real-life version of that. So we're trying to bring together these audiences, this audience, and bringing people from around the globe who are like-minded and who are diverse to celebrate beauty and this idea of self-expression and using makeup as a tool for that.
Wonderful.
Hi, everyone. I'd like to thank Councilman Price. My name is Kevin Gold. I'm a founding partner of BeautyCon Media along with Jonathan and Moje. I'm really excited to be here today. I'd like to echo both of their comments and again, thank everyone for this opportunity. When I think of L.A., I think of the city as a really big, amazing, immersive experience. And for BeautyCon, we're excited to be able to contribute to that experience through our BeautyCon festivals. If you haven't had a chance to attend our BeautyCon festivals, I visualize it as sort of the Super Bowl meets Coachella for beauty. So imagine thousands of young women and men, boys and girls, who come to the L.A. Convention Center, August 12 and 13. We have hundreds of brands. These range from the indie, up-and-coming beauty brands all the way up to the L'Oréal, the Revlon, the Estee Lauder's, who all build immersive and interactive experiences on-site. So think of it less of as a conference or a convention and more like a festival similar to a Coachella. We bring hundreds of digital influencers, so I'm sure many of you have children, and your children are on Instagram and Snapchat all day. We bring the biggest digital content creators in the world to our festivals, who sit on panels. They do meet and greets with their audiences, and we have interactive discussions throughout the day. And I think one really important thing to note and how we highlight L.A. is that we have massive social amplification the day of BeautyCon. So every single festival trends on Instagram and Twitter worldwide with the hashtag #BeautyConLA. And so we're really excited to be showcasing the city on a global scale. We expect 20,000 people at this year's festival at the LACC, and we are investing heavily in growth over the next few years. Our goal is to have 100,000 people come to the BeautyCon Festival in L.A. This is our home. This is our, this is our market, and we're investing heavily in that market, and we appreciate the time. Thank you.
Well, thank you, guys, and we wish you well. The better you do, the better the city does, and we really appreciate this positive approach that you're bringing. So let's give them one more round of applause.
That's right, BeautyCon, August 12 and 13.
And we wish you success.
L.A. Convention Center.
And everybody, let's give Pori, our old friend, a round of applause. Welcome back, Pori. It's good to see you.
Appreciate it.
You used to run the convention center.
That's right.
Yes. Pori, you're a valued friend, and it's always a pleasure to see you again.
Always.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Good to see you. And, and continued success, my brother. Okay, I want to now, uh, recognize Mr. Sadio for our next presentation. Uh, Mr. Sadio, the floor is yours.
Colleagues and, uh, members, let me, um, say with great excitement that on August 5th and 6th, we will have El Dia del Salvadorino. And it will be the 19th anniversary, uh, of that date. Uh, I recall during this motion, uh, with you, uh, Mr. President, when you were the Speaker of the Assembly, and we did the first one, uh, and then it moved, uh, here to the city. Uh, August 6th is a memorable day in Salvadoran history because it's the day in which the, um, the Villa of San Salvador was founded after a, what's called the Cuscatleco. People fought valiantly against the Spanish oppressors and liberated themselves. As we know today, Salvadorans have overcome many obstacles, uh, for the last 40 years. One of the countries that has one of its largest diasporas in the world, uh, and has a very large Salvadoran community here in Los Angeles, uh, with the largest segments of that here in the First District, uh, in and around the Pico Union area, along the area we call the, uh, corridor, Central American corridor. Uh, and it's established itself, uh, really as part of the economic and definitely part of the culinary tradition and fabric of Los Angeles. Uh, this weekend, there will be somewhere between 10 and 25,000, um, members of our community gathering together for the culture and the music and the delicious food, uh, that will be part of it. And so today I want to, uh, congratulate Unidad de Comunidades de Salvador USA, Unicomdes USA, as the organization that's hosting the event this year. It's the umbrella group, bringing all the various groups together. And also I have someone that I've spent a lot of time, uh, this year working with on the question of immigration, someone who goes beyond the traditional council general role and is really out there in the community with us, uh, dealing with the questions relating to immigration. Uh, Council General, and I want to ask her to come up to speak, Maria Mercedes Lopez Peña, who will share a few words with us.
Welcome, Council, Council General. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you to all the members of the LA Council. Thank you to Mr. Sadio, who, we have been working together very hard these last, uh, weeks.
One second, man. Put that sign down, uh, Mr. Herman. If you put it up again, I'm going to remove you. This is their time. It's not your time. Sorry, Council.
Okay, no, that's fine. Thank you. So we have been working very hard these last weeks because especially, you know, at this moment, that our community, more than 1 million and a half Salvadorians, women and men that live in California State, but most of them live in the southern part of California. So it's a really big community that now, in this moment, it's with a lot of fear, you know, very worried about what is going to happen in the future. So it's, this is a really special time for our community, for our country, for our society. But it's special too because we are going to celebrate at the same time this special day, 5th and 6th of August, next, this coming weekend. Uh, we are going, we are going to try to unify our community in those events especially and the one, and Venice. I hope we see some of you there celebrating this day for the Salvadoran community. So thank you to everybody. Thank you to Mr. Sadio. Thank you to the staff that work with Mr. Sadio for helping us with this celebration. Thank you.
Now, thank you. Felicity Dadas.
Also, the Executive Director, uh, representing, uh, Unicomdes USA, Raul Mariona, por favor.
Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Council members. We would like to say, in the name of Unicomdes, we would like to say thanks to Honorable Sadio for being this, uh, be part of this work for El Dia del Salvadorino. In our celebration, we want to demonstrate whether we are not only violence. We are poems, we are music, we are culture, and we have a root like all people of the world. I would like to say thank you to Luis Gonzalez for all his support. With him, I think we can unite all the, the communities in here. It's the better example because he's from Mexico and he supports all the communities. That is the sample that we have to give it to the other communities. Thank you and good morning.
I don't know if I mentioned where we're going to be this weekend. It's, um, uh, on Venice Boulevard at Pico. And, uh, as I said, there'll be about 25,000 people.
Between what? Venice and Pico between?
Venice, Normandy and Vermont.
Okay.
As you would say, Vermont, but Normandy and Vermont.
Vermont.
Uh, so where's my?
And what time, Mr. Sadio?
Uh, Salvadoran time, or as we refer to it as 10 o'clock. Only laugh if it's true.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we're going to go to our multiple comment, uh, section at this time. Why don't we go with Mr. Walsh? If I could see what items, Mr. Walsh? Okay, Mr. Walsh, you have Items 1A, 1C, 23, 8, 11, 16, and general public comment.
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, Highlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Uh, number one, Building and Safety, uh, you're doing a pretty good job there. Number two, this is, uh, um, Street Maintenance, uh, you do an okay job there. Number three, proposed improvement of the Foothill Boulevard, you do a good job there. I'm not one of these white guys who say you're all a bunch of crooks. We know who those people are, but that's, uh, I, I have the same color skin as they do. But I don't say you're all a bunch of crooks. We need white people running this. Uh, but you know who they are. Number 11, this concerns, uh, historic context, citywide, it's all BS. And then, uh, number 16, uh, which is, uh, these rooms that you, uh, occupy. Uh, you can, uh, I'm not here to run down the clock like all these white people till it's zero. You can take the 1 minute and 37 seconds and shove it up your ass. Um, fold it.
Let's give him his, uh, 1 minute.
And grease it. Fold it and grease it. Number one is the Olympics. Now, the Times says the amount of money that the federal government will have to spend on security for the 2028 Olympics is $1 billion. That's now. It's going to double to $2 billion. You want everybody in America to understand, you're, you're wiping Casey Wasserman's ass when you do this. There is no reason that, that the federal government should have to pick up security. Absolutely no reason. 2021, uh, '28, uh, I'm telling you right now, $2, $2 billion, $2 billion, and maybe $3 billion. It's going to bankrupt the city. It's going to bankrupt the state. And I hope Donald Trump has a couple of extra billion dollars rolling around because it could have an enormous effect.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you. Why don't you pull up Mr. Herman on the screen? And let's see what items he has. Okay, Mr. Herman, I have 1/8, Item 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and general public comment.
I'm glad you can count, but regarding the hearing protest and appeals on objections of liens through the Building and Safety, here's a good example alleging that the so-called Building and Safety had what? Mishandled complaints. Why? Because they like to put liens against your property so they could charge you 300%. And then you come down here and you don't know what to do. You go to Mr. Charles right there and then you settle out in the back. Now, if you would just come down here and fight for your rights and protest against the offensive liens, unconstitutional liens, because they say that your possessions and your property are trash, take down the tarp and clean it up. But some people don't understand that that's their culture. See, in my culture as an American, I say fuck you, Herb. But in your culture,
Mr. Herman, stay on the subject.
When it comes to what? Appeals handled by complaints by Building and Safety over height offenses, there's something definitely wrong. And then Ms. Monica Garcia Rodriguez, I'm sorry, because you were never introduced.
You have to stay on the items. That's, public comment was already satisfied on that item.
Thank you. And then I go into Item Number 8. You said I had Item 8, sir? Right?
You signed up for it. Go ahead.
To deny more alcohol, because we don't need alcohol. That's what we brought up at the Board of Supervisor meeting. You can listen to it tonight on Channel 28.
Stay on the subject.
It is. It's dealing with, what necessity in alcohol convenience. What a bunch of schmucks. Thank you, John Walsh. And then, once again, regarding what? Relative funding for community service benefiting the homeless. Well, Mr. Bonin there, he's so caught up on drugs, he doesn't know the difference between homeless.
No, stay on the subject. No, stay on the subject. Mr. Bonin has nothing to do with it.
Homeless people have issues on drugs. Homeless people live in the streets because of drug addiction. Now, if you can't support homelessness under HHH, there is a problem. Then I go into what? Felicia Escobado, Escobedo versus the City of Los Angeles, miscellaneous liability payouts.
No, you have, that's not one of, you have, Mr. Herman, you signed up for items. I told you what items you could speak on. No, I told you what items you could speak on. You have to play by the rules. So why don't we give him his general public comment where you can say what you want?
Now, under my discretion of what a true asshole is, it's Herman Jason Wesson Jr. Because I filed my complaint, and this is for the record, rookie, DOJ 607616. My complaint against retaliation, harassment, and discrimination under ADA Title 2 and 3 by the Los Angeles Police Department. On behalf of all the cadets and the explorers, fuck you for fucking with kids. All of you are involved. Englander was involved in sexual harassment here. No one did anything. Jose Weezer fucked his Chief of Staff, Francine Gadoi. No one did anything. So when I raise my attention to fuck you, white niggers too, that's exactly what I feel about you. It's my opinion. So what I say is offensive is not for you to decide what's offensive. It's for me to exercise my First Amendment to say fuck you too.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time has expired. Okay, now let's, uh, members, Madam Clerk, uh, let's vote on Items 3, 4, 5, and 6 and 7. You got that 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now, let's vote on Items 12 and 15. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you. Could we bring up Mr. Previn on my screen at this point? Mr. Previn? Mr. Previn, you have 1C, 1D, EFG, 8, 11, 14, 16, 17, 18, and public comment, general public comment.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from CD2. Will you be accepting comments on the legal settlement items before or during consideration?
Mr. Previn, I gave you the items.
No, I'm asking about specific.
Mr. Previn, I gave you the items that you could speak on.
Point of order. Okay, fine. So then I'm going to take that as a. Will the city attorney respond or no?
No, you have the items.
Okay, fine, sir. I mean, it's very.
Or you can go straight to your general public comment.
No, I'm going right now. Item Number 8, sir, is, uh, public necessity and convenience for an alcohol license for a Target in Price's district. Obviously, uh, Target is a responsible provider. But I want to address the fact that 50% of all road deaths, uh, involve some alcohol inebriation. 50%. And among pedestrians, a group we're very concerned about, 30% of all road deaths are, uh, involving alcohol. Where, I think the pedestrian is drunk, 30%. So we really could do a much better job. And I know David Rue and Mike Bon and others are progressive thinkers. How can we solve that? How can we solve the fact that we're polluting people, uh, and then they're driving off the road and hurting people? We got to do it. We can do it together. I know if we work hard on it, we can. Uh, Item Number 11, State Office of Historical, uh, looking at women's rights, which I'm very pleased about. We're going to find a little HPOZ that's unique to, uh, women's rights. So, good stuff. Item 13, you're continuing as a Connect LA, try to get done to help outreach.
Mr. Previn didn't sign up for Item 13.
No, I know. You continued it, did you not?
You're on Item 14, Mr. Previn.
Yeah, 14 is $2 million a year for CD9. Uh, this is some money to help with Prop 47, to get the recidivism, uh, down. We want to provide some employment opportunities. I would ask that we articulate, it's $2 million a year for three years. How many folks do you think we can help? How many folks can we get into a job and support with support services? Let's state a number because I'm concerned that we're going to put a few staffers together and by the end of the time, a small number will be helped. I want to make it a larger number. So let's state that number and then reach that goal. Uh, Item 16 is Bonin's putting 50K in for the homeless of Venice and I'm sure they're going to appreciate it. It would be good to have a little bit of spec out on how we're going to spend it. 17 is a lawsuit, um, where we got the, a payment wrong. We paid it to, uh, the wrong account for Dale Galippo. Dale Galippo, as you know, is an attorney, uh, who represents plaintiffs, uh, so is Arash Hamampour, so is Matt McNicholas. These guys beat up the city all day long and leave the door open, which worries us because we can't quite figure out, while they're making donations to Mike Fure and Mr. Krikorian and others, how we keep experiencing the same retaliation lawsuits, like at Ronald Gray, for example, today at, uh, Item 20, which you'll be discussing later. I know, I know. Item Number 18 is the AIDS Healthcare Foundation, sir. These guys, uh, right-sized a project, uh, that you mislabeled as Sunset Holdings LLC. It's actually 5901 Sunset Holdings LLC. Of course, it's in, um, O'Farrell's district. Now, O'Farrell has some problems. He's taking $445,000 in public benefit money to his little group, but this is a guy who can't return excessive contributions, even now that we're putting a dunk tank for excessive contributions at the Taste sponsored by the LA Times at Paramount Studios over Labor Day weekend.
Give him his 1 minute for general public comment. Go ahead, Mr. Previn.
Yeah. Tonight in the Neighborhood Council in Studio City, there's going to be a vote on the Harvard-Westlake Bridge Over Coldwater Project. Unfortunately, the city attorney has been chilling, uh, the rights of people on the board by sending out weird recusal interview letters. He sent out, uh, a message that we find, um, horrifying because obviously critics are allowed to vote in neighborhood councils and a pecuniary interest, which means financial, sir, uh, would prevent someone from voting in a matter. Like, for example, if I were the owner of the construction company who's going to build the soccer field-sized giant piece of concrete in the hillside of Coldwater Canyon, obviously I would have to recuse myself. But just because I don't like or do like the project, there are people on our board who love the project, they should not be forced to recuse yourself. And Mike Fure ought to do his job. This is very, very worrisome. This is serious First Amendment stuff, sir. So ask Mr. Martinez and the Neighborhood Empowerment Group to withdraw that letter forthwith. And I appreciate your interest in city government, sir. And, uh, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Sadio.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Previn. In fact, Mr., no applause, Mr. Herman. Mr. Sadio, you, uh, wanna recognize someone?
From the, uh, MIT of the South, I want, uh, to acknowledge that we have the Monterrey Institute of Technology and Higher Education. They're here from Chihuahua. The Tecnologia de Monterrey, uh, Chihuahua, Mexico.
Where are they?
Levante se, por favor, todos, de Chihuahua.
Welcome. Mr. Spindler and Mr. Herman, sit down. You're not part of this group. Welcome, welcome. All right. Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Sergeants, would you make way? And what items does Mr. Garcia have? He's, he's got two. So, Mr. Garcia, you could get a minute for, uh, item two and a minute for general public comment. It's good to see you again.
Thank you. I thought that the item number two, I, I want to say that people would really need to have, eh, public safety in, in environment, also in building the, the sidewalk, pre, put more accessible sidewalk. I mean, we need them, we need them now, we need them more than ever. On item, um, I guess going to continue on, in public comment, um, I just want to say that maybe if you, I want to, I want to invite everybody here to the, to the, um, to a meeting that's gonna be taking on the, um, on the eighth of August. It's a public meeting on August 17th, in Home Public Safety. The, eh, the, it's gonna be the eighth at one o'clock, um, uh, from one to, to door E, and it's gonna be at the Calais Maldes Building. I don't know if you know Maldes. Uh, the building Maldes is, is thick and thin, and also it's gonna be at the, um, come see, be, be.
You wanna give him his general public comment? Oh, that was it? Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Thank you very much. Do we have Craig? Someone has signed up as Craig. Craig, come forward. This is for general public comment.
Yes, my con, my concern pertains to Mr. Karen Price and Mr. Harris Dawson in the Eighth and Ninth District, the bus stops, and, uh, any sort of recidivism program go way back to the advancement project with Connie Rice, when the city council gave her like $600,000. We're a small think-tank organization, and we've watched you guys, we're analyzing you guys. We're just a small think-tank organization, and we're trying to garner support from independent powerful sources, because you guys are not performing. You leave the State Assembly and come back down to the city council. We know you have a arterial motive. We don't know you yet, but the bus stops are nasty. The crime and the violence is rising. You sit there like you cool, but it's not cool. We saw you with the sparks. We haven't seen you down on Normandy. We've never seen you on Normandy with the nasty bus stops. We've never seen you participate with the people in the community. We always see you with the people with the money. We got your number. We don't know you yet. We're just a small group. We're just a small group. Okay, sit there and do that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, if you pull up Mr. Spindler on the screen. Mr. Spindler, you've got items, uh, one A, one C, one D, E, F, G. You have two, four, six, eight, eleven, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. General public comment, go ahead.
He can count too. He's very smart. Yes, thank you. So, number one, the liens. Fuck the liens. We don't need the liens. We say, when you do a good job, we say so. This one, no, you fucked up, so we have to say that. We don't want to, but you fucked up. CD fourteen, no lien. CD one has a lien. Yes, but they cleaned up Coronado, they're cleaning up South Coronado. Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Sadio gets amnesty from the puppet for the whole week for doing the good thing he's doing. Thank you so much. Now, we get to CD seven, the new one, Mrs. Felipe Fuentes in CD seven, Monica Garcia Fuentes. You have a bunch of lighting districts. We don't like these lightings. Unlike Nuri, your area doesn't sell enough drugs to qualify for lighting.
Stay, stay on the subject.
Yes, I'm just pointing out why.
No, you're gonna stay on the subject, or you're gonna sit down.
Lighting? Okay. What do I do now?
Uh, we go to Plan B when, when, when we have to.
Okay, you go ahead.
Okay. Fucking here, fucking protests against the fucking proposed, fucking improvement, and fucking maintenance of the Lamona fucking avenue, and fucking Tupper fucking street, number fucking three, fucking lighting, fucking district, in fucking accordance with fucking section, fucking six point nine, fucking five, fucking dash, fucking six, fucking one, two, fucking seven, of the fucking Los Angeles fucking administrative fucking code and fucking proposition, fucking two, fucking one, fucking eight, fuck you. Number five, fucking here protests, fucking against the fucking proposed, fucking improvement, and fucking maintenance of the fucking wayside, fucking drive, and fucking hill roads, fucking street, fucking lighting, fucking district, in fucking accordance with fucking section, fucking six, fucking point, fucking nine, fucking five, fucking dash, fucking six, fucking one, fucking two, fucking seven, of the fucking Los Angeles fucking administrative fucking code and fucking proposition, fucking two, one, three, fuck you, CD seven. Fucking item, fucking number, fucking six, fucking here, fucking protest, fucking against the fucking proposed, fucking improvement, and fucking maintenance of the fucking Koreatown, fucking number one, fucking street, fucking lighting, fucking district, and fucking accordance, and fuck you on the fucking item number fucking six.
Give him, give him his, uh, general one minute.
You can't stop us. You're not gonna stop us. We're gonna control you, and we're controlling you like puppets. That's why I bring a puppet. Gonna control you, controlling you. TROs, false arrests, false prosecutions, we're here, and we're gonna stay. Like Marlon Brando said, what am I? I'm a clerk working for grocers here to collect on a bill. I'm here to collect my fucking bill. Now, pay me my goddamn bill, 'cause I got my bill. And as soon as I get my bill, I'll be on my way back to the grocers I work for in Ventura County. It's as simple as that. Now, we're gonna have transgender bathrooms, all the bathrooms are available to everybody. Come on out, take a big shit in any bathroom you want here at City Hall.
Your time has expired. Okay, that ends the, Mr. Herman, no applause. That ends the general public, uh, comment, and that also ends, is there any other general public? Ms. Richardson, I thought I saw you come up, and after Ms. Richardson, that will conclude, uh, Mr. City Attorney, the general public comment.
The problem with the Sheriff's Department, Board of Supervisors, people here in the City of Los Angeles, I believe was caused by Russia. Twenty-one days to vote instead of one, one, one will do it. I believe Russia did it. Voters not being able to vote for their favorite person 'cause they didn't appear where they should have. If Donald Trump had known Russia was also meddling with Los Angeles, they wouldn't have done it. If he, somebody had reproved and told Trump about that, they will not be able to do it again. They messed with the voting process in the City of Los Angeles, no sheriff vote, Board of Supervisors superficially circumvented. This chamber superficially circumvented, if I'm, if I'm correct. If Donald Trump had known they'd done that, he would have reproved them severely. He needed to know about that process.
Thank you, thank you. So, that concludes public comment? All right. Let's, uh, Madam Clerk, why don't we take up item one for a vote? So, on item one, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now, let's take up, uh, items, uh, two, eleven, and fourteen. Two, eleven, and fourteen, please open the roll. One, Mr. Price, let's, uh, scratch that, yes.
Just on item fourteen.
Well, let's, let's, uh, take up items two and eleven. Let's open the roll, two and eleven, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now, we'll go quickly to items sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Price, item fourteen.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to request a report back from the, uh, CAO on the level of funding that's gonna be available under this program.
Okay, so, on this, uh, issue, let's, item fourteen, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Let's take item number eight. It's my understanding there's a card on eight. Item eight, is there a card on eight? Eight. Beth, please come forward. Do we have Beth? This is on item eight. Beth, are you Beth? I'll let you pronounce your last name, yes.
Beth Albelafia, I'll waive my right to, uh, speak.
Thank you. On item eight, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Krikorian, I think I need some guidance on the closed session items.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, item nineteen, we will need to, um, consider in closed session because a member has a, uh, question on that one. Items twenty and twenty-one are acceptances of settlements. Uh, budget and finance has considered those matters and recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendation. And item twenty-two is the rejection of a settlement, and again, budget and finance recommends, uh, acceptance of the city attorney's recommendation to reject the settlement.
Okay, so, let's hold that one item, we'll go into closed session on that, and if I could get the, uh, clerk to read the other items, and then we'll vote on them.
On item twenty, in the case entitled Ronald Gray versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $950,000 in settlement. On item twenty-one, in the case entitled Jane Doe, number two, versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $450,000 in settlement. And on item twenty-two, in the case entitled Robert Coleman versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement.
Okay, on those three items, there are no speakers on the queue. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Miss, no applause. Ms. Rodriguez, it's my understanding for an introduction.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you so much. Um, colleagues, if you'd please just join me in welcoming a group of high school students in USC's Bovard Scholars Program.
Where are they? Stand up.
Would you please stand?
Yeah.
This program prepares them for applying for and attending college and introducing them to potential majors and career paths. The group is joining us today and visiting City Hall because they're interested in government and public policy. Welcome to City Hall.
Welcome, welcome. Okay. All right, so, sergeants, let's prepare to clear the chambers. We're gonna go into closed session. Please, uh, we're going into closed session, uh, we have to vacate the chambers.
It's a word that shouldn't be used, and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people, as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong, and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury, even if the injury is slight, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act, including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail, and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost 80% of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they're going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
5859, can you have 5060 watch 3? You're in the corner of the road.
5060, 5060, turn left.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have to no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law, and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as grill beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's, the guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Are we good? Okay, so I don't know if it's the city attorney or the clerk, do you want to indicate where we are in today's meeting?
On Item 19, in the case entitled Cody Weiss versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $650,000 for attorney's fees and costs.
Okay, on that item, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, those motions are posted and referred. Announcements, members? Announcements, Ms. Martinez?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to remind everyone that tomorrow we're having Movies in the Park in the communities of North Hills, and we're gonna feature Lego Batman at North Hills Community Park. I want to thank, it's one of Mr. Krikorian's favorite movies, thank you very much for that. And I want to thank Councilwoman Rodriguez for co-sponsoring this along with Congress Member Cardenas. So we're gonna be out there tomorrow at 7:00. We have raffles, we have food, we have a lot, tons of fun, and it's Lego Batman tomorrow at North Hills Community Park. Thank you.
All right, that's great, and I'd want to, on Ms. Martinez's behalf, invite the community to come out. And I want to just say this, on that subject, Mr. Englander. Mr. Englander was Chief of Staff for his councilmember Greg Smith, and basically started Movies in the Park, and they have now grown and evolved, and several of us do it. So, Mr. Englander, it was a great program, great idea, and the people in the 6th and 7th District should be very excited because not only is it Mr. Krikorian's favorite movie, I think it's a lot of folks' favorite movie. Mr. Englander.
We've now expanded Movies in the Park, so we've got to challenge all you guys to step it up as well. We are now, every year, also having a drive-in theater.
Now, that is a...
We're on our, we're on our third year of drive-in theaters, and it's been phenomenal. It's a lot of fun.
And that's, we'll all get together, conspire against you, Mr. Englander, and we're gonna do one big one in, at Mr. Price's district at the convention center, okay? So we'll top that. Okay, any more announcements? All rise for adjourning motions, all rise. I'm going to Mr. Caretz, does, do you have a adjourning motion?
Yes, I'd like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Lenora Orferer. I knew Lenora and her late husband Mark for over 40 years, and she was a gracious, driven, and courageous woman. She was also the mother of one of my dearest friends, Dennis Orferer, who I've known since high school and who later worked with me at West Hollywood City Hall and also staffed the Assembly Labor Committee when I was chair there. She was born under Cleveland, Ohio in 1928, and was the beloved child of Hungarian immigrants. And despite trying circumstances and growing up during the Depression, successfully worked towards education and earned her bachelor's degree at Ohio State University, where she met her husband, Mark Orferer. They married in 1950 and remained together for 66 years until his death last year. She and Mark moved to Southern California in 1955, and had been here ever since, and she was a resident of Council District 5 for over 60 years. She began her career as a medical technologist, and later earned a Master's of Science degree in library science from USC with the highest honors, and she became the first and only medical librarian at Santa Monica Hospital, creating and managing the library for 37 years, first by paper and then transferring it to digital records. Lenora survived by her daughter, Jelaine Marks, her son, Dennis Orferer, and grandchildren, Brandon Gale and Naomi Rune Orferer. And Los Angeles has lost a beautiful soul, and I and those who knew her greatly mourn her passing, and we offer her family our deepest condolences and prayers.
Looking still to my right, Mr. Krikorian? Yes?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I ask that the council adjourn this meeting in memory of one of the NCAA's greatest football coaches, which I hate to admit as a USC fan, but Ara Parsigian passed away, one of the greatest Notre Dame coaches of all time. Ara Parsigian was the son of a survivor of the Armenian genocide, who hid playing football from his mom, who refused to allow him to play, until he made the varsity team and had to admit it to her when he came home with an injury. He went on to play at Miami University and got All-American mention as a halfback, Mr. President, even though he was only 5'10" and 185 pounds. So, for all of us little guys, kind of a hero as well. He joined the Cleveland Browns after college and played professionally for a short time before beginning his coaching career, and of course, he became legendary at Notre Dame with a record over 11 seasons of 836. It was 95 and 17 with four ties. His last regular season game was perhaps one of the greatest college football games ever played, the game against USC, when Notre Dame was leading by 24 to nothing at halftime, and then SC went, ended up winning by 55 to 24 with four touchdowns by Anthony Davis, which many of you may recall. He went on to win the Orange Bowl that year, so he went out as a winner, and his post-coaching career, he was a winner as well. He founded a nonprofit organization that raised money to finance research on Niemann Pick Type C Disease, which is a genetic pediatric nerve disorder that had killed three of his grandchildren. And so he made tremendous difference to countless families because of his work there. He went on to become a commentator on ABC Sports and brought college football into many of our living rooms through that as well. He survived by his wife Kathleen, who next year would have enjoyed their 70th wedding anniversary together, a daughter Kristen and a son, Michael. Ara Parsigian, great loss to the country, passing away at age 94, and may he rest in peace.
Still looking to my right. Now I'm looking to the left. I do not see any adjourning. Mr. Caretz, you have another one?
I have one more adjourning motion. It's with a heavy heart that today we remember Paul Herzog, a deeply committed community organizer, educator, mentor, and environmental leader for more than 30 years. Paul earned his BA in Political Science cum laude and was recipient of the Judge Beck Award for Outstanding Graduating Senior in Political Science from Cal State University Northridge. He immediately put to get his instinctive understanding of politics to work in environmental and social justice issues, becoming a founding member of the Conejo Valley Green Party. He deeply understood the value of connecting people's lives to the earth, and so Paul was an early advocate for community-supported agriculture and introduced the model to organic farmers in the Ojai Valley. He learned the value of community organizing, working for the Oaks Project, and used that experience with the Biona Wetlands Trust to organize the permanent protection of the wetlands ecosystem. His unrelenting efforts and ability to train and motivate others led to 6,000 handwritten letters sent by voters to the California Legislature that resulted in the acquisition of the Biona Wetlands Ecological Preserve. In 2009, Paul joined the staff, the staff of Surf Rider Foundation as the National Coordinator for their Ocean Friendly Gardens Program, an advocacy program aimed at motivating local governments to support pro-environmental policy changes. He deeply believed that climate change could be reversed by building healthy soil and capturing rainwater, and hundreds of ocean-friendly gardens have been built throughout the U.S. as a direct result of his activities. He was a tireless teacher and strategic thinker, who most recently worked with my office to educate us all about the multiple benefits of the watershed approach to landscaping. And this resulted in our introducing the Watershed Approach Motion, LADWP's adoption of a multi-benefit watershed approach to turf replacement rebates, and this year, he was instrumental in introducing SB 780, the first comprehensive set of guidelines for using a watershed approach in all state-funded landscape programs. Paul is humble, extremely hardworking, and a gentle soul. He will certainly be missed by all who knew him and were impacted by his good work. And he is survived by his family. A celebration of his life and work will be held this Sunday, August 6, at Tree People from 11, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Caretz. Mr. Bonnet?
Can I enter that one, Mr. President?
Okay, so to the clerk's office, we'd want that to be a dual signature, Mr. Caretz and Mr. Bonnet, so please act accordingly. All right, with that said, members, this meeting is adjourned.